Ressler.
Here.
Hooch.
Hoecamp.
Here.
Martins.
Here.
And Riddle.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, if you'd all join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any proclamations or presentations?
No, sir.
No? Public input?
I do have two things. The first, James, is Mr. Anthony Graves on line?
He is.
Mr. Graves, would you like to address the council at this time, please?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Thanks for your time tonight. I'll try to make this brief. The reason I wanted to speak tonight was because I wanted to make a proposal to add additional signs to the leash ordinance signposts in Admiral Tross Park, the park behind Budnick. I live in Meadow Ridge subdivision and I often take my dog for walks and skates on that trail back there. And my wife and I have both been involved in multiple incidents where unleashed dogs have caused issues. The most recent actually resulted in injuries after two unleashed dogs attacked me and my dog. And I feel like adding an additional sign would empower the public to report these leash violations without the need to worry about dialing 911. And I also think it would give people confidence to take this step to make the call. We've already spoken to Mr. Don John and he agrees and is fine with, you know, with a sign that would say something along the lines of, "Please report leash violations too," and then maybe the phone number of the city police department, you know, the 5151 number. We felt like that would be just fine and wasn't terribly concerned about, you know, any additional workload, I guess, that's going to put on them. You know, the issue I think that really needs to be addressed is these repeat offenders that go back there and then the copycats that see them. I feel like the people that do this really just need to, you know, be warned or cited once for them to maybe not continually do it over and over. And I think by adding an additional sign to each of those three signposts may, you know, allow people, give the people, the public confidence to actually make a call and to report those people. So I was really just hoping to make that proposal tonight. If something could happen.
All right, thank you. We will get with the Public Works Department and see if we can get some additional signs installed. Hopefully that will help. I think, does the chief have a comment?
I do, really quick. I have talked with Tony and he was attacked pretty well. And so we have had the officers and if he's been going back and kind of reporting repeat offenders. So we've gone over it with the officers that, you know, if they're not on leash, they may not be aggressive dogs, but we are to address it. So they have been going out and dealing with that because, no pun intended, it's a pet peeve of mine, too, when people don't have animals on leash and, you know, then you have to stop your walk. But anyway, we've been addressing it with Mr. Graves and he's been very cooperative with us and patient with us. So I would hope the signs would, you know, say that. Hopefully that somebody would feel more apt to call the police than just let us know a violation has happened. And usually if it's the first time, we'll just let them know the ordinance and it doesn't happen again. But it's when it continually happens that we're seeing problems, so.
All right, anybody else? Oh, Alman Niemitz?
Our leash law is posted, but it's a problem in, it's a problem in Bone Shoe Craft Park, too. And there are, there are just a lot of people that are intimidated by that, depending on the size of the dogs and the aggressiveness of the dogs. So it's probably something we need to address all over town. Our leash law is, it's advertised, it's on the, it's on the rules of the parks. And I think what Mr. Graves says about posting the actual number to call, that maybe will be a little quicker action and maybe there'll be someone else that calls besides myself.
Right. Call immediately when they see someone without a leash.
Thank you.
That person, the dog.
And then just one, the only thing we did. Run into is the officer went out and the officer, it was just, you know, some confusion because there's a failure to restrain dog. That means it doesn't, they don't have to be on a leash. If they have the shock collars on them and they can control them. But that works if they're like at their residence or something. But the parks have a special park ordinance that they must be leached. So that's what, we had to educate the officers again that, hey, look, we understand they may be in restraint of their dogs, but they must be in the parks, they must be on a leash. So that was just to help address that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we've also received an online comment as well. Brian and Rhonda O'Farrell. To the City Council, we support a hen ordinance in the Columbia city limits and respectfully request that the aldermen revisit this idea. For some of us, the purpose of wanting hens is for the daily production of fresh nutritional organic eggs as a hobby with the benefit of fresh eggs, as an educational experience for children in self-sufficiency and animal husbandry for a combination of these reasons. The ordinance drafted last fall was extremely well-written and encompassed safeguards that should have quashed the negativity that some aldermen have expressed regarding hens. Cats, dogs, unsightly lean-tos, you have all addressed those with ordinances, so give hens a chance. Let those of us who want them that privilege, and if the privilege is abused, we have an ordinance to address the problem. Thank you.
Any comments?
That's all we've received, sir.
Any comments or announcements from the aldermen? Alderman Ressler.
Well, I wanted to address the aldermen. We're going to have an election tomorrow. Some of us may not be back. May have a new mayor, new clerk, new alderman and that. So I wanted to go ahead and bring up the way we've been operating the city government for the past 12 years since I've been here. And I wanted to make sure that the people that are here, because you may not be here after tomorrow, that we were still thinking the same way and also address some of the recent events that have come up. And one thing in particular with the city government, since I was up here and that, we had about 15 years ago, a lot of turmoil up here and things calmed down since then. We adopted a management style that we hired good personnel to operate our departments. We had a city manager that would go ahead and oversee them. And then the mayor and the alderman got involved as needed. And so that's worked pretty decent. We've had some issues with personnel over the years and not everybody does. But the recent one with the departure of the past mayor and that went ahead and brought to the forefront something that has cropped up occasionally and nothing severe in that. And I'm not going to go ahead and speculate on the mayor's resignation. But it was regarding something that had to do with conflict of interest. And conflict of interest is something that we may have to deal with again real soon. Right now, there's no one here that I know of that has a conflict of interest with anything that we've been taking up or dealing with and that. We may have one or multiple people with a conflict of interest that comes up. And I wanted to bring up that you need to be thinking about that. If this scenario would come up, how are we going to deal with that? Are we going to deal with that? And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody had been made aware of this, in case you were not, that it's an issue that brings back a decade ago turmoil that I don't want to be, have to go through again. And so if there's a discussion or any comments to be made about what may happen or if it's just wait-and-see attitude. But at least I wanted everybody to be aware that, at least I've noticed it, that this may come up. And so I wanted to give people an opportunity to go ahead and make some comments tonight. And it's not that the timing is basically is to do with the election. It's like I just started to more seriously consider that this is something that we need to maybe be prepared for in the next few weeks that we may have to deal with this. Also in changeover and that, our system of dealing with our department heads and having the city manager and having the mayor and the alderman get involved in as-needed situations and that. I'm concerned about that because 15 years ago, that was not the case. It was micromanagement going on, turmoil. We lost personnel. We lost good people because they were involving themselves. And sometimes it was for personal reasons as opposed to the best interest of this city. And I don't want to see that happen again. And I hope it doesn't. But it's something that, the more political rhetoric that starts to come out, that some of it sounds very reminiscent of what was here many years ago. And it's like a generation has forgotten what went through back then and how bad that was. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody here is aware of that and if they're prepared to go ahead and deal with things, step up to go ahead and try to educate or avert some of the problems that go ahead, that could come up. Because we've got people like Scott and Chris and Justin. And they are, they're basically laying out our city. They're the people that go out to the buildings. They're the ones that decide how the buildings are going to look, where they're going to go. Chris is out there laying out the roads. Justin's going out looking at the houses and the other commercial sites. And they catch all the flak. We don't go ahead and have to deal with much of that. They deal with it on a daily basis. And their jobs have been criticized by what they're doing. And I think they've been doing a hell of a job since they've been here. And I don't want Justin, the building inspector, to be the most popular guy in town. I want him to tell us how it's supposed to be. And if somebody doesn't do it right, then they need to go ahead and correct it. And I've heard these criticisms over the years and I haven't seen one that's gone ahead and came here to the council with the criticism of fact and saying that, hey, this guy's completely off his rocker. He's wrong. They haven't done that. They haven't liked what they've been told, but it's been accurate. And our old mayor had many times talked to people firsthand and told them that. And I think we need people like that. And I really hope someone doesn't try to get involved and try to influence or exercise discretion on how we're going to apply those codes and those variances and those zonings because that's where we got into the problem years ago. This whole thing of a good old boy system, it may have existed 20-plus years ago. It doesn't exist now. And I personally was a victim of it. I knew the people that had done things informally. And their things they did informally got us in lawsuits, which have been settled since I've been here. And it's a lot of money for people that did things off the cuff and informally gave people permission and go-ahead's and that. And it's like, no, you can't do that. And that's what I really don't want to go back to. And I just wanted to make sure everybody here was thinking the same thing. They may disagree with how I'm thinking of it, but they're going to go ahead and at least know that it's been brought up. So if, anyway, those things are what I've been thinking about. And I wanted to pose to you guys, if you have any comments or if you completely disagree with some of the things I'm saying or if you agree with them or if you just want to sit back and wait. Anyway, that's what I wanted to make a comment about.
Alman Niemitz?
I'll take it from there to a very slim extent. But I agree, we have worked, as long as I've been up here, I know we've worked to go from a, we've worked to be a professional government. That's why we have good staff members. We have people in charge, all of those here, of their departments and they answer to the city administrator and then they answer to the mayor and council. We've worked very hard for that. This isn't about friends and family and favors. And I think that most of us here, that's what we've worked for these years. Because coming from a small, very small town, 2,500, 3,000, that existed. But you didn't have staff, you didn't have codes in place that you have now. I think we've worked, again, very hard. I think the term is professional. We're not a small, we're not a small municipality anymore. You know, we're 10,000 to 11,000 plus with the facility planning areas. And we're only going to be growing in the future. And we need to have things done professionally. It's not always the popular way for things to be done. But if we want to have a city that looks well and functions and operates well, we have to do it professionally. This is, this is not to suit anybody or anyone's friends or family or anything else that comes into it. So I feel very strongly, I agree with you, Alderman Ressler, completely. We've been through tough times. I don't want to go through them again.
I agree with both of you totally. Alman Martins?
I totally agree with what's been said right now. And I was mad last week when I met with their city manager after the comments made that the city hasn't done a darn thing about COVID-19. We busted our butts in this council and the people back there busted theirs. And when they say nothing's been done, I don't take kindly to that. And what was said, it wasn't, it wasn't right. And thank God, the Republic Times put an article in the paper, "What Has Been Done in Columbia." What was said about that was a disgrace. And if that's how you're going to treat employees, we don't need that.
Thank you. Thank you. You have any other questions for the city attorney?
Do you want, do you want me to say anything about the subject of incompatible offices?
I would appreciate that.
Yes.
Well, yeah. The law is plain that if an office is determined to be incompatible, stepping into the second office automatically amounts to a resignation from the first office. And that cannot be undone. The person who is in the incompatible offices cannot reflect further and decide that he doesn't want the second office and resign from it. That doesn't do anything. And I found, while we were talking here, I found an Illinois Attorney General's opinion, which said that an office, that the offices of a township supervisor and a county executive are indeed incompatible. And now, I know this is a different situation. I'm, I think, I think this is coroner and mayor possibly. I'm not sure. I've just, I've only been told about this just recently.
That's correct, yeah.
But it would seem to me that there is a high likelihood that the mayor, the office of mayor would be deemed to be incompatible with the office of coroner because the county contracts for the city in various ways. And another attorney general's opinion said that if there's a possibility of the two governmental units contracting with one another, that one, the same person can't be on both sides of the contract, so to speak. And that represents an inherent incompatibility. Now, if, if, if this were to happen, I'm just, you know, I'm just speaking in the hypothetically here. But if this were to happen, if the county coroner were to become the mayor, then I think, in my view, he most likely would resign immediately from being county coroner. And he ought to reflect on that before he, if he wins, he ought to reflect on that before he steps into the office. It may even be too late if he wins. I'm not sure about that. I've not researched all that, all those nuances. But this can be brought up by any taxpayer. I mean, there's an action, a form of lawsuit called a quo warranto action, where you can ask by what authority a person presumes to continue to occupy an office. And the, if this happens and there's this, the question of this incompatibility of offices comes up, I would think that any taxpaying citizen of the county. Now, is this, this is in, this is in Monroe County, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. That any taxpaying citizen of Monroe County could bring up that question and litigate the matter if they wanted to. Of course, the expense of it might deter them. But that's, this strikes me as being a rash thing to do. Now, I can't say with 100% certainty that a court would regard these two offices as being incompatible. But from what I can see in the attorney general's opinions and the decisions on the subject, I think there's a very high likelihood that they would be deemed to be incompatible. And this problem's not going to go away because if, because people, because the person involved wants to hold both offices. That doesn't remove the problem or the potential for lawsuits or, it just doesn't. So I can do further research on this if the council wishes. But that's, that's what I know about incompatibility of offices.
Thank you, John. Do we want him to look into it?
I guess we can wait on that.
Mm-hmm.
She would have it tomorrow.
Alman, want to tell them that?
I guess Doug can call him if he needs to.
Is everybody okay with that?
Hey, I'll make one comment on that. His definition there, if the likelihood of contracting between the two agencies, that's a very general term when you're dealing with that. And that, that conflict of interest, we just got done dealing with one of those and I don't want more of them and that. So I'm just adverse to seeing that.
I will say that, you know, being the coroner is different than being the county executive. So that may make it, make the resolution of this question a little more doubtful. But it still strikes me as being a very high-risk thing to do. Now, what will happen here is that the, if this person is elected mayor, the incompatibility of offices will not change his right to be mayor. He will be mayor, just that he won't be entitled to be the county coroner anymore. That's what happens. When you step into the second office, you immediately resign, whether you intend to or not, you immediately resign from the first office. And that's, that's clear on the case law.
Does that take place after he's elected or after he's sworn in?
That's, I don't know the answer to that. I, I'm not sure that there's a, I would say for sure when he's sworn in. It may be when he's elected, but that's, that's a question that I don't know the answer to.
I think we should know this.
Well, I can, I can research, in fact, if you like, I can research it while the, while the meeting's going on to see if I can come up with something. Although I might be, I might be a little bit inaccessible as I'm going on West Law and looking for attorney general's opinions. I can find out what I can, what I can come up with and report back to you before the meeting's over.
I think that would be good.
I will, I will do that. I think Scott has my cellphone number. If I'm doing research and I'm not responding, I'll resume. Have him give me a call and I'll get back on Zoom.
Will do.
He needs to.
All right. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any comments or announcements from department heads? Doug?
City Treasurer, City Treasurer, Linda Sharp and I, we've completed the draft of the first budget, or the draft of the budget. I'd like to request that we do a committee of the whole meeting next Monday night, 7:00 PM to review that. That'll be the sole focus of that particular meeting.
That would be the 12th. Okay. All right.
That's all I have, sir.
Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have three items on the consent agenda. The first is a motion to approve the minutes of the March 15, 2021 regular city council meeting. The second item is the motion to approve the closed session minutes of the March 15, 2021 regular city council meeting. And the third item is to approve the payment of vouchers for the period of March 13, 2021 through March 31, 2021, for the total amount of $662,606.86.
Is there anyone wishing to pull any of these items from the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Alman Hooch, Alman Niemitz, second. Roll call.
Hooch.
Yes.
Hoecamp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Eversole.
Yes.
Agnew.
Yes.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Ressler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, motion to approve purchase of a new sewer jet rider from EJ Equipment in the amount of $66,483.
Sure. We had $75,000 in the budget to replace one of our jet riders from, I think it was 1986 is the year on it. So we got two bids that came in under. So since it's such a large amount, we needed to bring it to council for reviewing approval.
Is there a motion to approve? Alman Agnew, second. Alman Hoecamp. That is Hoecamp, true enough. Roll call.
Agnew.
Yes.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Ressler.
Yes.
Hooch.
Yes.
Hoecamp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
And Eversole.
Yes.
Second item would be an ordinance number 3562, vacating surplus right-of-way for the re-subdivision of part of lots 4A-11A of Christian Campers addition to the city of Columbia. Is everyone familiar, everybody familiar with that parcel? Is there a motion to approve?
Who's sworn?
Alman Niemitz. Second. Alderman Martins. Discussion. Roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Ressler.
Yes.
Hooch.
Yes.
Hoecamp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Eversole.
Yes.
And Agnew.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item would be an ordinance number 3563, approving the re-subdivision of a plat of part of lots 4A-11A of Christian Campers addition to the city of Columbia. Is there a motion to approve? Alderman Martins, second by?
I'll second.
Alderman Niemitz. Discussion. Roll call.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Eversole.
Yes.
Agnew.
Yes.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Ressler.
Yes.
Hooch.
Yes.
And Hoecamp.
Yes.
Scott Dunnekey, you have an item for discussion on ordinance 3544?
That's mine, we're 3564, sir.
Oh, 3564.
That's mine. That's for action tonight, please.
Okay. Ordinance number 3564, authorizing the sale of surplus personnel, personal property. Any questions, comments?
Just anything to add besides what's on the, I mean, the list is...
Just anything to add besides what's on the, I mean, the list is, the list was included in the packet.
It was.
Well, what, if I may, what kind of triggered this is we're obviously working to clear out the Oak Street building in preparation for demolition of that site and clearing of that site. Going through that process and conversations with department heads, there are a number of vehicles in the city and other pieces of large equipment that are no longer useful to the city, mostly the envoy that we have here that was formerly used by a building and zoning, a couple of police cars that we found alternative, alternate methods of disposal for offload to other agencies that'll find a use for those. Chief Donjohn and Captain Heine have been instrumental in, uh, kind of facilitating those transactions. But after reviewing the list of all of the items with City Attorney Brockert, it was determined that these are the items, as they're titled, they're large, obviously the high-value property, we do need to pass the ordinance. The other items at the Oak Street, there are quite a few items that were left from the senior center whenever they operated, out of here at City Hall that were shifted over to that building, things that were out of the former schoolhouse that were not original to the schoolhouse, they were procured separately to kind of add to the ambiance, if you will. The value of those did not necessitate being included on an ordinance like this, so we are planning to do a spring cleanup yard sale at the Oak Street building that will try to offload some of those items.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve? Alderman Ho Camp, second by Alderman Martins? Discussion? Roll call.
Ho Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
Eversaw?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Neimitz?
Yes.
Russler?
Yes.
And Hook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item would be ordinance number 3565 approving an annexation agreement for property having St. Clair County parcel number 06330302009 located at 2635 Old State Route 3.
I just wanted to step up real quick since you hadn't seen this before. This is just a standard petition to receive water service from the city from, on a property that is not within the city limits, so this is our standard procedure, as is required that the, anybody receiving water or sewer service from the city must either be annexed into the city or sign an agreement to that effect. So, that's this simply, there, uh, since it was just for water service, we are asking you to go ahead and, um, take, take action tonight on this so they can get their, their water service hooked up.
Questions? Alderman Russler?
So, Scott, I'm determined that was 20 years?
Yes.
The term's 20 years?
Yes.
So, um, this came up in the past, I think, and we've had some go longer than that, but
the idea would that be, would be that within 20 years, we would have adjoining properties, be able to, huh?
Contiguous.
Yeah, have contiguous properties and that, and so then that agreement would kind of fall away because they would be annexed in as a attached parcel. Is that right? Or is this agreement 20 years and it can be re-up for another five, 10, 20 years?
No, no, basically what it says, you're, you're limited to 20 years for annexation agreements by statute, so, yeah, you don't extend them or anything. If, if they haven't annexed within 20 years, then the annexation agreement just expires and goes away.
And the water line?
Stays.
They have, they have to, they have to annex if they're contiguous.
I, I would, I would have to think at that point, I don't know, none of us have been around for 20 years and the ordinance hasn't been in effect for 20 years, so maybe that'll be a question as to if it expires after 20 years, are they required to, are we required a new one?
Yeah.
But, nothing personal, but I hope to be gone by 20 years from now.
Alderman Neimitz?
I think that was my question that came up because I, I posed that question to, to Mr. Brim's office and, and to Mr. Dunnekey, that I was just approached from someone living in the county now, but I guess for me, what didn't clarify is, and I read the ordinance and I, and I'm aware of this was 2017, but how far out do you reach to do that? Because how far, how far is it logical that they may be surrounded in, in X number of years and, and there are contiguous?
Yeah.
So, and who keeps track of it? Who's got the, who's got the suspense file on that, 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 that this pops up? This pops up and says, okay, this property, they signed a pre-annexation agreement, they got the water line and whatever else, whether other amenities, I, I don't really understand how you follow up on that, and if this entire room changes out, how do you keep track?
That's, that's a fair point, and to be frank with you, we, you haven't tracked that up to now and have never tracked that in my career, so that's, gives us a good idea of something to put in place to actually do that for our, our, the people who come after us.
In the past, the way that I've seen that done is you tag it in the city's GIS system.
Yeah.
You can add a special file or special notation on each parcel that this would be applicable to, that at such time, because you're going to be consulting with the city's GIS map whenever you're working on an annexation, so if you're able to see that you're able to annex, say, X, Y parcel and Z parcel's hanging out there, you'll know that whenever you take X and Y in, Z will have to come in with that same batch, so to speak.
And, and the clerk's office tracks it from a water service perspective. We track those along with recruitment agreements.
And just one thing to add, I think we've only got two so far. This would be the third, since that got enacted in 2017, and there are two more that, that have inquired that may be forthcoming at next, the next council meeting. So, I mean, that's, that's the magnitude of who we have that are not contiguous that could have public utilities.
So, do you?
There are other ones in the city that don't, but since the ordinance was enacted in 2017, this would be the third one.
This will be the third, but do you, is this only within a mile and a half of the facility planning area? If somebody's three miles out, can they do this too?
Well, it depends on where we have utilities.
Well, I know, I know that, but I, it seems, still seems like the parameters of it aren't really set for, for future people coming in. It seems like, in a way, it's a little bit of a winging it as you go along, and, you know, this can all change around in a couple of years, everybody.
Yeah, like, so this got enacted when Jimmy was here and we had one on Columbia Corey Road, we since then have had one off of Sweet Bar Lane and, and Country Manners, I guess, south of Joyview. This one is Route 3, you know, we do have facilities that go into other communities and jurisdictions, obviously we can't annex somebody who's already in, and we have lines that go from Sojai all the way to Columbia, so we're in Cahokia, we're in Sojai, we're in Prairie de Pont, you know, so I guess that's to be determined, I guess, on how, you know, we, we just haven't had a whole lot of these, and like, and Neimitz, a good point, what happens after 20 years? I mean, or we can be a community that we just don't allow it, if you're not in corporate limits.
I just mean, is there, is there something that can be amended that you can think of language that maybe would just nail it down a little bit tighter so that, so that it doesn't, you know, again, I don't know how far out they can request, because how, how much is realistic if it's not really ever going to become annexed? It might not be.
The situations that you run into, if I may, is that utility expansion is really one of the few mechanisms that a municipality has in order to grow, and obviously if a municipality doesn't grow, we're going to be surrounded by Waterloo, DuPo, you know, all of our neighboring municipalities to where we're not going to be able to expand. So the easier or the, sooner that we can get utilities out to these underserved areas with ordinances of this nature, the better off that we're going to be because we're going to be able to capture that growth.
Yep.
And I, I kind of view that as an investment, that if we have these lines out there, odds are in some of the remote areas, they are going to be underused. To more customers that you can get on these particular lines, the better off the municipality is going to be, because we're going to get the increased revenue. The lines are going to be actually used instead of sitting stagnant, so it's a situation where while we may not at this time know how long it'll be before we can get to the former sports page site that we're talking about here this evening, odds are as the area continues to develop, more houses are built, changed over, what have you, we're going to be able to capture that growth and expand to where I would see probably reaching the sports page property within that 20-year period.
Yeah, it's, it's worth mentioning, Doug, this, this property has been served by city utilities in the past.
But it was a situation where, right.
I wasn't pinpointing this, I wasn't pinpointing this at all, it was just because I had a request from, from someone that lives just right outside of Ward 4 just recently, and then this came up, it just seems like this was a time that, that a few questions came into mind and I, I didn't know if there was any, any more refining that, that would need to be done to it, or if, if, I mean, he's just explained, he's just explained a real positive for the city, so.
And one, really one of the things that you look at, I, I know we, we've got a number of residents that live on Stemmer Road that are currently outside of city limits that are frankly tired of hauling water, they're in a situation where they do want city water, that's something that Mr. Smith, Mr. Dunnekey and I, we've been looking at how to serve that area. Hopefully with the new development that's going on the old Fairfield Golf Course, we'll be able to take another step forward in that direction, but that's going to be another situation where you might only have one or two folks that are interested in tying on at that time, and I'm just pulling that number out of air, I'm sure it'll be, there'll be a lot more interest, but it'll be a situation where as one or two folks in a particular subdivision or development are tying onto the city water, signing these agreements, the other neighbors are going to see that more as a positive than a negative with regards to the annexation into the city, and you're going to be more likely to capture those and make those properties contiguous.
Okay. All right, I appreciate the explanations, thank you.
Alderman Agnew?
At this time, is there any need to take a look at the out-of-city rate?
At the what?
The out-of-city rate, the rate, the current rate.
We do that during binder, we do that during binder process, however you.
Need to change it for any reason?
Uh, we're looking at keeping it on par with the resident rate, and we can, we're going to go through that here this evening as part of the, the fee ordinance discussion.
Okay.
Okay, did we have a motion or not? No motion. Is there a motion to approve? Alderman Russler, second, Alderman Neimitz? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Russler?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Ho Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
Eversaw?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
And Neimitz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Third item under new business would be discussion of the special event application for 2021 Songs for Soldiers Benefit Concert. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Eversaw and council members. So, obviously Songs for Soldiers, and Dustin is here, by the way, wanted to recognize he is here, and obviously this is a big event for the City of Columbia because this event does attract thousands of people into Columbia every year except for 2020 evidently, um, but then, you know, it, it, I think Columbia has been good for Songs for Soldiers as well because we, we provided an excellent opportunity and a good space to grow for, for very little cost, and after the 2019, um, event, two, two or three aldermen had said, hey, before we get to the next one, let's have a discussion, maybe we can do things, you know, to strengthen up things a little bit, you know, because what we do, as you're aware of, is just a special event permit application, which our typical special event permit, you know, you're, you're talking about an event of maybe 200 or 300 people, but we're talking about this being an event for 7,000 to 9,000 people as, as Dustin has, has estimated for this coming year, which I, I would say probably every bit of those, given the, the pent-up desire to get out and party, and I, I know I'm ready to see some live music again, there's a couple of really good concerts I've missed out on the last year, so I sure do plan to be there as well. But for 7,000 to 9,000 people, let's just say that $125 permit fee with a, an application is a pretty darn good deal, and we're not seeking as staff to, to put out Songs for Soldier, we look at them as being an important part of this community. Let me stress that what, what we're talking about here is maybe in, instead of doing it by simply by a special event permit, strengthening it up for both sides of the equation and doing it more of a memorandum of understanding, that way there's a contractual relationship between us and them where we're obligated to do X, and so are they, in terms of, because where it's come up before where I've had, in particular, been questioned about, and I'm sure Chris has gotten some of the same questions, it was in, you know, in, in the process of restoring the fields to their pre, pre-event condition and making sure that, you know, any of the damage is repaired and all, and there's been some complaints over the years about that not being done appropriately, and I don't want to make that a central portion of this because it's all been, been handled and taken care of eventually, so that's not a big deal, and once again, um, this is, this is simply about trying to do something that's going to take better care of the taxpayer resources that we have in, in the community and make sure that there's accountability on both sides of the equation, and to be frank with you, if you look at, um, uh, let's see, what is it, like, I guess in the PDF, if you're looking at it, would be like 85 to, page 85 to 89, I think it was, where he's outlining, lining the special events and then the operations, really that's, this would just be written up into a memorandum of understanding form that says, this is what you do and this is what we do, and then should there ever be an event, let's say we, we invoice and the invoice wasn't paid, we would have a ramification then, we would have a legal recourse at that point as a memorandum of understanding. If we're just sending an invoice for, let's say, police services or what have you, we don't necessarily have any way to really collect on that because we've got no contractual agreement on that. So, once again, this is only done at the request of some council member, of some of the aldermen who said, hey, we need to look at a way, maybe tighten this up a little bit, and this is the suggestion that I had for you to tighten it up. By all means, I'd love to hear what Dustin had to say, um, we, you know, this is, this is not, we don't want to put you out of anything, it's just a matter of just making sure both sides have something a little more concrete to offer each other, and I wouldn't think that it would take any longer to put that together than it would just a special event permit.
I, I, I fully agree that I think it's grown to a point where everything needs to be looked at as well, so no surprises from my end, and totally agree that we should have a, an actual contract because this thing has grown for the good, and I just, real quick, I'd like to thank you guys for all the years of letting us grow it here. I've had so many offers to take this to St. Louis, it just doesn't feel right, I like it here, I think the community likes it here, the county likes it here, and not to mention just the concert, a lot of veterans that are regionally, when they need an actual service, our local businesses do, so whether it's, uh, Dr. Workman does our dental work a lot of times, Mike Newton at T&amp;M does a lot of work, so, you know, it's just, it's a little bit more than just a concert, too. I think at this point, it's pretty cool that a small town of ours is, has allowed us to spend over $670,000 on over 570 combat veterans, and then also working with Jason, he's, he's been a great ally in DOPW, I remember last year, 2019, they came out and they were trimming up some trees to help with some sightlines and stuff, that was very nice of them, and then obviously EMS, and one thing I think that I'm most proud of of the event, and I think Jason would, would agree, we've never had a police issue, you know, so I do think we, uh, when I, I do events full-time now and I had a mentor tell me if your event looks tight and organized, your crowd will act tight and organized, and so far, we've, we've had a pretty good, pretty good run in eight years, um, but, um, you know, that's it, I would be happy to this PDF that I drew up to answer or clarify any questions or, or, yeah, address any concerns. I do think in 2019, we got it right a lot quicker, so one thing on damages, and I put this in here, uh, the Monday after the concert, I think it, you know, we did it in 2019, I, I believe it might have been Mike Sander, maybe you, Chris, I don't remember, but met out at the park, we flagged what we saw we damaged, let the city flag what they saw was damaged, and then we paid an outside, I think it was Linneman Lawn Care, to come out with their trucks, and they have the equipment, and no disrespect to the city, but it's cheaper for us to pay a company
Sure.
than the city and the labor that comes with it, I don't mean that in a bad way, but it, it just saves us probably a couple to $3,000, so, but yeah. Any questions?
Alderman Neimitz?
No, I think the detail on this was, the detail on what we were presented in the packet was great, and the, the one thing I did notice, too, when I looked at the calendar for the CAA this year, that I think they have that field which hasn't been as utilized in the past, but I believe this year they've got it booked solid for March through, I think through really the entire, the entire summer season, so that's, that field is getting a lot of action, and I think the detail that you're going to on this is going to make sure, Dustin, that it's in good shape, the field and the area is going to be in good shape, when you're all done with everything you need to do, and then when the Columbia Athletic Association comes in on that field and needs to use it, it'll be ready to go for them, too, so.
One thing we did in 2018, maybe it was 2019, I can't remember, I don't, I don't think it was the last concert, but we actually entered into, obviously sponsors cover the cost of the show, and we entered into an agreement with one of the local lawn care companies and traded them a certain level of sponsorship as what the service was, and I was still working for the city at the time, because I remember seeing them do it, but they came out and actually put the park, I'm sorry, the baseball field and the adjacent field next to it that we use on, I don't know if it's a Scott's Four-Step Program or whatever, but it really did plush it up, and I think the stronger that grass can be and the thicker it can be,
Absolutely.
the more it can take a beating, not only from baseball but from us, and it's the least we could do to the city for all you guys do for us, it, it doesn't cost us anything, we just traded sponsorship, so I'd be happy to try to seek that out again with one of the local companies because it did really make the field a lot tighter and plush, so we could do that again, too.
Pays off. Pays off, treatments pay off.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Justin.
So, it sounds like everybody is in agreement that that's a good way to go. I will work with Sue and with Dustin then to pull something together so we can present it to you for the next meeting for your consideration, and city attorney, in all likelihood. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Eversaw, this is John, I've got some results here.
Okay.
The, I found a case which says that the positions of, of deputy county coroner in an elected position of county board member are incompatible. Now, that's not exactly the same as what we have here, but I've also checked out the duties of coroner, this is in chapter 58, section 3-3,003, but one of the things that there are a couple of sections which say that under some circumstances, the coroner has the duty to act when the sheriff's office is vacant, so the coroner is potentially a substitute sheriff. Now, the fact that that possibility exists strikes me as being completely incompatible with, with the office of mayor of the, of the city of Columbia, and probably other aspects of the coroner's job are incompatible with the office of mayor of the city of Columbia. I mean, I could see that maybe on questions of, you know, ambulance service or whatever that you discussed with the county, the coroner might be involved, so I continue to think that, that, I mean, I can't say for certainty that a court would say that these offices are incompatible, but I would say there is a 75%, at least a 75% possibility that a court would say they're incompatible. And I found one case, well, the case I cited to you, in which the court held that a deputy county coroner was incompatible with the elected position of county board member, there's language in there that says that individuals' acceptance of the position as deputy coroner constituted a forfeiture of his elected position as a member of the county board, so I would say that probably the forfeiture of the position will take effect upon the individuals, the persons accepting the office of mayor, assuming that he, that he wins the election.
Okay. So, where do we go from here?
Well, we're more informed than we were, so, see what happens.
See what happens tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else for John? Are we gonna have a closed session?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, John.
Welcome.
Item number four.
Chris? Water main extension to county, country crossing two, phase two?
Yeah, I just want to kind of get everybody's take on, you know, country crossing twos in the process of improvement plans, and whether people realize or not, country crossings one is served by only American Water, not the city of Columbia. The developers approached the city of Columbia and said, hey, would you guys be willing to serve us water? So, at the time, I was like, well, I'm not sure if we can or can't, even though it isn't city limits, sometimes there's certificated areas that maybe only American Water has, and so we met with only American Water about a variety of issues, and one thing we asked, because there's another potential business on that side of 158 that's looking for maybe water as well, just to see their view of what can or can't be done. And when I first got here, you know, I ran into a situation where someone wanted water up near Columbia Quarry Road, doing the research on it, there must have been, Mayor Snyder must have filed a lawsuit with the ICC about only American coming across 158 and feeding a couple of houses, so there was a big language on that 20 years ago, so I wanted to see what actually could transpire. Now, only American Water says there's nothing they can do, you know, if we want to serve water to them. Some things to note, and I kind of want to get everybody's kind of view on, is this something we want to entertain or not, then I obviously have to discuss how it gets implemented or what the, what the potential options may be, but we do have a 12-inch water line that runs down 158 on the north side that was put in 20 years ago, whatever, it's gonna serve Fountain's water district, it's gonna come across, go uphill, cast on the sidewalk, and that happens, so we got this big 12-inch line. It does feed Todd Hall, so there's a little bit of uses there, but it's predominantly not really well utilized. So, obviously, if we could take, you know, get water across 158 and get it in to serve 135 homes, I think that's a benefit from all this flushing and things that we do. Plus, I think strategically, having water across 158 might be in our best interest in the future. You know, our Memjawa agreement, which is our agreement, us, Coca-Cola Fields, with only American expires in seven years, there's a lot of things that we're gonna have to figure out as far as water distribution. Our water from the north is, is extensive as far as infrastructure from Soje all the way to DuPo, it's not in the best condition, some of that, so there could be major capital improvements on that end, but maybe if we encroach on the southern end, maybe there's some opportunities to get our distribution kind of switched from the south versus the north, which is much better water because they have a booster station at Frank Scott. So, there's a variety of things here that I think strategically, it could be in our, an advantage to get over there, plus again, you know, there's 135 homes, and I mean, you know, tapping fees, two grands, there's, you know, $270,000 worth of eventual tap fees. As far as, just so you know, just as far as a rough estimate, you know, if we had a contractor do this, it's probably 120 to 150 grand to give it into country crossings, whoever does it, so costs could be recouped. You know, if we were to do some of it ourselves, you know, we could probably save 30 or 40 grand out of that, because one of the biggest costs of that is obviously blurring underneath 158, and it's unknown at this time if IDOT, because they switch back and forth, if they would let us directional bore, or if we have to do a jack and bore, you know, there's different costs there, I mean, from 35 to 60 grand depending on the type of means and methods that they will allow, and that would have to be determined obviously through the permitting process. So, just kind of wanted to see what everybody's thoughts were on that, maybe thought it was a decent idea or not, and then I guess the second thing is, is how best do we go about implementing it? Is it something we handle ourselves, is it something we say, developer, you have to do it yourself, is it a combination partnership? Kind of wanted to get everybody's thoughts, you know, if anybody had opinions on a, on this scenario. And another long line too is, with our Memjawa agreement coming up in seven years, one thing that we have working in our favor, I believe, is the fact that Waterloo is going offline on this side, you know, they're building their own plant, so there could be potential, and sometimes, you know, we've had, last summer, we had a couple breaks just north of our DuPo pump station where we have lines that go underneath a little canal there, where we had to try to depend on the south leg to keep up during the summer, and sometimes right now, only American kind of limits us because of Waterloo, you know, they get kind of the priority because our distribution right now is like two-thirds from the north, one-third from the south, you know, so with Waterloo going offline, I think there's also potential to, and again, if there's other development on that side of 158 as well, if we have accessibility to water, then that could be our advantage as well of being on that side.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to throw that out there and see what everybody's thoughts were, and kind of get some idea of how to, how to proceed.
Olomon Russell?
Do you have the excess capacity on labor and, and time to?
Well, that's the thing, you know, it all depends, we have, that's the thing, you know, we try to balance us doing some work and then contracting out as best we can.
Yeah.
We're already kind of, you know, the Quarry Road project, when the culverts get replaced, we're gonna replace the 10-inch water line over top of that, that's one thing on our list. We gotta redo the line on Centerville Road from Main Street to Columbia Avenue, we have to do that within a year because of our permit will expire. Then you look at Columbia Quarry Road, you know, we've already kind of said that, hey, we'll run, you know, a quarter mile of this 12-inch down to maybe some, and then the developer runs that transmission line through the development, and we pick up on the other end and go to Bluff Side, that, it depends on when that kicks place as well, we've already kind of committed ourselves to that, so I mean, you know, it's gonna be about timing and availability, so.
Well, if you went ahead and subbed it out and you went ahead and add that cost to the recruitment cost, and we would get back the cost of the installation, it would be higher, but we would get that back through a recruitment agreement?
Well, through tapping fees.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, our tap fees.
Yeah.
Eventually, over time, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got press for, for these other projects and that, then I would not, you know, say you have to, you don't have to do this and that, if you think you can timely get all that stuff clicked together, that's great, but if not, then it just goes more into the tapping.
We would have the opposite of bore of the line, I mean, so, I mean, you know, the savings maybe be 30 or 40 grand if we were the ones putting it in, it's not a very long run, but there's just, there's a lot of things that we've committed and we only have so many resources, so I don't want to cash, you know.
I like the timeline, too, I mean, getting all that stuff done adds to, you know, things progressing quicker after that, after you get to them, so.
I think it's something though, where I think it would be staff's recommendation that we do look at exploring some sort of a public, private partnership with the developer, not only to ensure that we're able to capture those customers and our ability to serve that, but like Mr. Smith said, getting on 158 is huge for the future development of that area.
Getting some more activity on that 12-inch line.
Right.
Is, I think helps pay for part of this too versus all the flushing we do into the ditch, which is one thing now in seven years, when rates could change dramatically, it's gonna be a much bigger issue, and we've got multiple places where we ran lines, you know, 20 years ago that just hadn't developed out as fast as maybe what was intended. So, I mean, that's something that we're looking at, we're monitoring, we're tracking for our own account of water, and that's why when, you know, we start doing some of these extensions and stuff, I mean, we're trying to be cognizant and not making more dead-end lines because the EPA is cracking down harder on us, we have to do a nitrication action plan, which we're evaluating nitrates and our chlorine residuals, and the rules aren't gonna get any, any easier, and we've got a unique situation where we got water all the way to Soje. And I think Doug and I talked today, Congressman Boss come out on a Friday to turn something on a Monday of a potential project, their community, whatever funding program, where they go to the Congress, you know, so we, we had talked about earlier about doing some, being a little more proactive with some of our infrastructure needs and kind of getting at some of detailed costs and some narratives and try to, well, one of the things that we did was for our DuPo pump station, we've got kind of a little plan of action of how we can help that, that pump station out, and what it would cost and how it would help parade a pond, and different things like that, so that's the project that we turned into Boss to see if maybe we can get some funding on it, you know, which would help out our system, but, yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot to do, but I think strategically, getting across 158, besides the future development, it also helps out with our, our big 12-inch main that we have running down there as well.
So, I think if we're looking just kind of for a head nod, are we okay with moving forward, discussing with the developer possibly a cost share on that, that particular project that will obviously not only benefit him, but long-term benefit the city?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Olomon Neemitz?
Just two questions. Do, for something like this, this is not what a special assessment area on some of these larger developments can apply to, right? This could not be used for, that wouldn't be a tool to work for something like that for a large development where you've got, you know, a couple hundred houses and we're trying to extend those lines?
It can be, but I don't think we would be looking at doing something of that nature here.
Okay.
It'll be something we can definitely look at as part of evaluating the different funding mechanisms.
Okay.
But at least initially, I don't think it would be a recommended approach for this particular project.
Okay.
Typically, what you're looking for with an SSA is a situation where if there's a development group that has a proposed HOA, the HOA goes defunct, it leaves the common ground unkempt, perhaps drainage issues that are unaddressed, that would be an appropriate situation where the SSA that's put in place prior to the development could be activated to recoup some of the taxpayer dollars that are used to maintain those common areas, but with something like this, I think the majority of our cost would be retained through the actual tap fees.
Okay. The second, the second question I'd like to ask you too, I know, and I know I brought it up before, and we're gonna have budget talks on Monday, but you said maybe in-house we'd save 40 to 50, is that, I mean, that's a guess, I know, I know you're just guessing, but if we, if we could do it in-house, we had the manpower to do it in-house, are we talking, still, it has to be outside engineered, you're talking about totally the labor for installation, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the rough estimate was anywhere from 100, for construction was either 106 to, let's say, 130 some thousand, and you gotta figure 35 to 60,000, that is the bore itself, so then you subtract that and we can, we can reduce costs by half, I mean, it's probably 30 to 40 at best, you know.
The second part of that too is, and I know it's different departments, but if there's some other things that, if we have the expertise to do some of those things and we can do them in-house, and I know I've brought this up before, but then do we, do we subcontract the mowing in a park, or do we, do we do that, do we have, is there something of a lesser cost that we do instead and, and put our, and put our crews to work? I know there's different crews within a department, but I'm just throwing it out there just to keep it in mind, if there's some other things we could subcontract for that maybe doesn't require the expertise that I know a lot of our, that a lot of our department people have, just, just something to think about.
Since Doug's been on board, I mean, you know, years ago, obviously we have like 17 employees, we have 14 now, but years ago, you know, you had a construction crew, you know, you had a group of three that was completely assigned to construction projects, you know, maybe you could do two or three a year, you know, if you look at the DRD sewer line and the water line that ran off that way, that was put in by Public Works, and that changed the growth of that entire area.
That whole area, yeah.
And we're kind of at that crossroads again, where we're trying to see where you're getting, you know, to, to, to the, to the east and then to the south are probably two of the biggest areas of growth, you know, the north's kind of getting almost built out. So, yeah, figuring out ways to get utilities out there, whether it's the corridor, whether it's whatever else, is something that, you know, we're heavily looking into, but it, we could look at, I mean, there's equipment issues too, you know, we've got some dated equipment would have to be upgraded as well, but it's something that since Doug's been on board, has kind of been thrown out there a little bit, if that's the direction we want to go, because we have a lot of stuff we could be taking care of, there's no doubt about it, as you'll see in the upcoming budget.
Just a couple thoughts, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Kevin, you don't have anything?
No, you're good.
So, Mr. Smith and I, we will work with the developer to continue kind of flushing out, no pun intended, some of these costs, and work on a potential agreement to bring back to the council.
All right, discussion for the year 2022 salary and fee ordinances.
Uh, this is kind of a jump into a conversation that we'll have overall next Monday night with the budget in its entirety, I just wanted to knock out some of these smaller components this evening. We are looking at maintaining status quo on a majority of the fees assessed by the city for fiscal year '22. We are looking at an increase of 2% for all water and sewer rates, which is only two tenths of 1% above the CPI over the St. Louis region, but as you'll see next week, whenever we delve into the budget discussion as a whole, there are a number of projects that are contemplated for the water and the sewer funds, as well as some of the concerns that Mr. Smith addressed this evening with regards to our sewer collection system and the plant itself. Everything else other than EMS, we've obviously discussed EMS in the past rather in-depth prior to my arrival and then last year as part of the process, but the directive that was given would be to increase that, all fees for the Columbia Emergency Medical Service by 5% for fiscal year '22. But again, everything else as far as, you know, licensing and everything would remain status quo. Any questions, comments, or concerns on that front? Then jumping over to the fiscal year '22 salary ordinance, we've obviously discussed in the past as part of the transition in the police department, the rates for the Chief Donjohn and Chief, our Deputy Chief Heine, with the consideration that will be given for those two positions, but all other positions not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, we are looking to maintain in line with what has been done with some of the collective bargaining agreements as well as years past and a 3% across the board for the salary ordinance.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, we'll proceed to the committee of the whole meeting next Monday night to look at the budget package altogether.
All right, great.
That's all we have this evening, sir.
So, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, did you want to, just kind of reiterating on the announcements?
Second.
I'm sorry, just to reiterate, next Monday night, 7:00 PM, we will have the committee of the whole meeting to discuss the fiscal year '22 budget.
Will you send stuff out before the meeting?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Olomon Pook? Olomon Agnew, second, Roehlhoff?
Pook?
Yes.
Hall Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
Eversaw?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Neemitz?
Yes.
And Wrestler?
Yes.